All those in favor, I'll put it up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Communication C, we have thirteen B to thirteen D, refer the missile operation west to committee. Communication, first one, Communication C, questions regarding information, communication, and guy in the process used to other communities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, a guy in resident positioning, the elected officials. Send that to M.O. What's that? Oh, Counsel Burgman was first, Counsel Burgman.
Thank you. I would suspect that Counsel Russell feels that he might get the award for the most misunderstood slash misrepresented item of the evening, but I'm gonna challenge him that. I think I'm gonna take the cake. I'm reading the order. I know what the chairman's order was, 'cause I made it. City Clerk Beagin is hereby requested to work with the city solicitor to provide city council with a report concerning the roles of residents in the city council when placing items on the city council agenda. Somehow, that has morphed on social media and elsewhere into there being a, items on the council tonight, asking whether or not the city council should vote to allow residents to file petitions. Just doesn't say that. Doesn't say anything like that. This came about because, two reasons. One, there's language in the charter that raises questions about what types of petitions should be filed by, should be filed by residents and what types can't. And then there are other communities that we're aware of that do things differently than we do in Worcester, but raises questions on whether or not we're following our charter correctly. We heard Framingham requires three hundred signatures before a citizen's petition can be put on the ballot. City of Cambridge, which is often quoted here by my colleagues, is a very progressive city. You can't, as a member of the public, put a petition on without having two counselors endorse it beforehand. So, we don't do any of that. And I think it's a good thing that we allow free access for, for the public to petition the city council. So I'm gonna ask the city solicitor what the different roles the public has versus the council has in submitting petitions. But I just wanna make it clear that, you know, the hostility towards this item tonight, unfortunately, is not only unfounded, but it's totally inconsistent with the language of this order. I'm gonna repeat it again. Yes, the city clerk Beagin is hereby requested to work with the city solicitor to provide city council with a report concerning the roles, doesn't say no role, doesn't say excluding the role, it says the roles of residents in the city council when placing items on the city council agenda. Very disappointed, but not necessarily surprised, given where we are in the calendar year of how this has been so misrepresented. But let me talk to the city solicitor through the chair, if I may, and ask a few questions. So through the chair, the city solicitor, with respect to the report that you gave, that was in response to the chairman's request, is that correct?
Through the chair, correct.
And was it chairman's request before you, or could I give you a copy of it? Are you?
I have a copy of it.
So what I, I just repeated twice, and I won't repeat it again, is that accurate as far as what the request was?
Correct.
Okay. And based on your report, can you provide some feedback to this council, whether or not there are different roles with comparing the residents and the counselors when replacing, when placing items for petition on the city council agenda?
Counsel Russell?
Through the chair. So the most distinguished role is that city counselors have access to information that is afforded to them through the city manager, through the administration, through our charter. So that, any order that relates to information that's under the city manager's authority as an executive function of the city is a right that's afforded to the city counselors. Other than that, residents may petition government for any matter which is within the, where they statutorily are authorized, such as a zoning law, zoning petition, or any matter that's within the jurisdiction of this body.
So if I may, through the chair, to the city solicitor, basically summarizing your, and I don't wanna misspeak, so please correct me, summarizing your report, the items that are under the exclusive control of the city manager can only be petitioned through the council, and every other item basically can be petitioned by the public. Does that sound correct?
Correct.
So there is a difference, but the public certainly has a right to petition.
That's correct.
The council. Thank you.
Counsel Hajiya, Counsel King.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can we take twenty-eight with this, in the interest of time?
Which one?
Twenty-eight. It's the one I held from last session about, I think it's twenty-eight here.
Okay, twenty-eight is...
The chairman's order, another chairman's order about public participation.
Yeah. Chairman's order, request city manager, request city solicitor to provide council with a report detailing if the CHI requires public participation to be open to non-Worcester
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to, to speak on these matters and preface my statements that this has nothing to do with campaigns, this has nothing to do with the time of the year, any allusions to that, as this has been a matter that I've been speaking on consistently for the last two years, this entire term. And we can delineate when and where and how. I've done it on the council floor, I've done it in the subcommittee, and here we are again. And I can say this, Mr. Chairman, over the last, over this past term, we have thickened the lines of transparency rather than thinning those very lines. This council, by a narrow majority, has reduced the authority of counselors, the authority of counselors, and the influence of counselors by reducing speaking during budget hearings. We have also canceled meetings due to public protest, dissent, and concern, which is also a mistake, Mr. Chairman, giving the message that you can disrupt city government. We know that when the Capitol was stormed on that January day, that they went back to work after deaths, after threats, after a siege, and attempt to overthrow a government, Mr. Chairman. And now, as a result of public dissent, here we are. We have conceded those council meetings. We have had citizen petition after petition denied. I would, I would perhaps, you know, think that perhaps it's been more than we have in the past. I don't have those numbers, but we have significant concerns about that. We have been threatened with litigation by the ACLU for petitions, citizens' petitions, being denied here in the city of Worcester. And then we allowed the same petition, and then we did the right, the right process, and took a vote, and voted those petitions down. At least a vote was taken, Mr. Chairman. These chambers have been the source of unrest due to the aforementioned. Article twenty-eight talks about, I'm sorry, item twenty-eight talks about participating by city residents only. This, Mr. Chairman, continues to lead us in the same direction, an all-out assault on civic engagement, Mr. Chairman. There's no other way to sugarcoat this. It's exactly what it is. We ought to be, in these times, with questions about government and political matters, we should be opening up the blinds. We should be allowing people full transparency, and it's something that I've fought for for quite some time. And we've heard the following. We've heard that from elected officials, that some meetings are taking too long. We're hearing that some folks don't wanna hear the public speak for too long. We've seen some of the, some of, I'm starting my time, I might wanna get me off the mic here. We've seen, we've seen folks say that there's too many people speaking. We shouldn't suspend the rules. We should suspend the rules. Perhaps we should look at what other communities do. We've heard references from elected officials saying, hey, in the past, we didn't allow anyone to speak. And while there's no motions that way, those comments are intended to influence the public, Mr. Chairman. We've heard folks say that public dissent outrage is off-putting. I'm not quite sure what the, the, what the motion will be here. I hope that we vote this. I hope no one files anything. I hope that it's simply a vote to a yes or a no, but I will not be supporting this. If you go back and you listen to subcommittee comments, you'll hear comments around the fact that, hey, this is what they do in other municipalities, and none of those comments are related to expanding civic engagement. We now have a process where you have to walk in downstairs, type your name into some database, sign off on some form, in order to pay a parking ticket. That's what's off-putting. That dispels and limits civic engagement, Mr. Chairman. We've gone a bit too far there. I hope the manager takes a look at that and has some reconsiderations. But this is, again, the people's house. The folks have a right to petition us, and I gotta tell you, you know, as far as this particular report goes, I don't give it any weight, this interpretation from the solicitor. And you know why I don't give it any weight? We've been doing business this way. The past city solicitors have interpreted this in a more liberal way, and all of a sudden, we have a very conservative opinion with respect to public participation, with respect to petitions that are coming forward. In these times, it is not, it is not prudent for us as government elected or government officials to cast any doubt on public access. This isn't about folks making things up. There's a clear pattern here over this past term, and we're going down a very slippery slope. I will stand against it, and I will always support civic engagement. We need more of it, not less, and I'm looking forward to the commissions and things that have been created over this past few years to be a part of that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counsel Hajiya.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, you know, what Counsel King said, I watched the MLO meeting twice, and I watched it very carefully, took notes, listened to the back and forth between the chair and the city solicitor and the clerk, and I am struggling to understand what problem we're trying to solve. For years, the city council has had a procedure. The residents can come and petition their elected officials on a multitude of items that arguably fall under the day-to-day operations and management of the city manager. Just in the traffic and parking committee, there's over twenty items on any given month the council colorio has to run through, and the majority of those petitions are put in by the residents. So when I read the solicitor's opinion, I'm struggling to understand, A, where is this going? So what problem we're trying to solve? I, I see different things. I see that the solicitor asked at the meeting to, for some assistance from the city clerk and the city council to, to help the city clerk and, and her office to try to streamline petitions, and that there's confusion around who can put petitions and who can petition the city government. That confusion didn't arise and didn't service, surface until we had a resident, a citizen's petition regarding the Gaza resolution and the conflict that we had between a similar order or similar resolution that Counsel Burgman had put on a similar topic. And so while I understand the language that this order is asking, I'm very clear about it, what I'm not clear is the unintended impact and consequence and the path that these two particular orders are going towards. In the city clerk's letter of, of, the cover letter, he recommends that we, essentially that any petitions that get denied go through their city councilor. So that's recommendation number one. But when I read the city solicitor's opinion, coupled with the questions that the chairman asked the MLO committee, it sounds to me like what we're asking for is a clear answer on whether residents can preserve their right to petition their elected officials. And we have heard over and over here again, by the reaction of the public, that that is how the public is interpreting, whether that's not the intention of the order, that's the impact that it had on the public, on myself and other counselors. So I would like to ask the city solicitor a couple of questions, if I may. Madam Solicitor, are any petitions that are brought in by residents on traffic and parking, on resurfacing, on any functions that fall under the purview of the city manager's day-to-day operations, are those by charter not supposed to be on the agenda?
Through the chairs, I, first of all, I don't know what petitions go on day-to-day basis. My response, in my opinion, was answer to question. There's certain areas that the residents, by, by law, because there's statute that creates that right, can petition a government. In other areas, such as access to information, that's an express right given to a city councilor. That was my response, and that's my response today.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Solicitor. So what I'm hearing you say is that petitions that residents are already putting on the agenda, resurfacing the streets, asking for a traffic light, much of what we discussed for the bulk of the meeting today are not explicitly prohibited from being petitioned by residents?
Through the chair. The charter actually doesn't identify what's called a citizen petition, and that's what my report says. The charter only requires that citizens or residents speak, and are allowed to speak at city council meetings. So an interpretation, which has been confirmed over the last twenty-plus years, 'cause I have opinions going back, it's not my novel interpretation, is that right to access is something that is specifically given to city counselors through the charter, because other than that, there's a separation of government. So the government, the administration of the city falls under the city manager, and that's why you have that right to access of information.
Does the city charter explicitly prohibit residents from putting any of the petitions of the nature that I just mentioned?
So through the chair, the city charter doesn't talk about petitions.
Okay. It talks about residents being able to essentially...
Speak and address the city council.
To the council. But our interpretation of the word petition is an ask on a cause, it's what I think I heard in your, I read in your report.
Well, the word petition means you're petitioning your government, so it would only make sense that it comes from the citizens and the residents.
So, Madam Solicitor, if you can just hang on for a second. So I'm, I'm not, again, I'm not sure, and maybe I'm not understanding right, what problem are we trying to resolve right now?
Through the chair, I was just responding to an order, in a chairman's order, there's no problem in my eyes.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Solicitor. So I'd like to make a motion for the city council to preserve the resident's right to keep the same process as we have thus far, meaning that residents can petition their city government, we can certainly get a report, I'd like a vote on, up and down on that, because that vote is going to delineate whether we're trying to resolve a problem or not. Our residents have the right to speak to their government in whatever way it is easy for them. We should facilitate that, we should make that easier, and we should encourage that, and not do anything to further put our residents, a big wall between us and our residents. So that's my motion. And again, for the city clerk, that is for the city council to vote tonight on maintaining and preserving the right of residents to petition their local government in the same way that they have done for the past twenty years.
Counsel Burgman, the second time.
I'm not surprised I have to stand up for a second time. There's nothing in this order that says we're trying to take away the right of the residents to petition the city council. You can twist it a hundred ways, there's nothing in it that says on MLO, we discuss many aspects of the city charter that are questioned by the public and questioned by the counselors as to what does it mean, why do other communities do it different, what are the various roles of the various parts of city government. I have no issue voting yes to preserve the public's right to petition, because that was never being jeopardized. What was being questioned was there's a difference, is there a difference, between what topics the public can petition the city council for and what topics they can't? And we heard from the city solicitor that some topics they can't and some topics they can. That doesn't mean the right to petition has been threatened or challenged. And again, if there's, if there's a question, which I think I heard, or a statement that there's confusion with the public, it's probably because people go online and post things like there's going, tonight's city council meeting, two items that pertain to whether Worcester city council should vote to allow residents to file petitions only through the city council gets posted, 'cause that's not what the items say, and that's not what the items are about. So again, I'll go back to what I said earlier, we've, we've never had an issue in MLO in talking about questions that people have, but somehow this has taken a path, and I don't, when I say somehow, I know the reason why, others can disagree, it's taken a path that Counsel Burgman and others, perhaps, are trying to limit the public's right to petition, never said that, never intended that, and that's not gonna be the consequence of what this order. By the way, this order was simply voting, voting for a report. There was no vote to be taken tonight. It was simply asking for a report. We have a report, and the report's fine. I heard from the city solicitor that there's distinction between the two types of things that the public and the council can petition for, and I'm satisfied with that. Having it gone the way it went, as far as what the implied implication is, is something that, again, I'm not surprised, but, but disappointed. Let me just finish, since I have a couple more minutes, with some other things that have been said. You know, I don't think the right, the rights of the public are diminished by the new security in this building. I applaud it. And if nobody else has said it before, I should've said it to city manager's evaluation, thank you for the number of years that the employees in this building have felt concern, that people come in and out of this building without any sort of security whatsoever. The public, I'm sure, for the most part, if you ask them, despite the inconvenience of parking and otherwise, applaud the fact that they don't have to wonder in a heated conversation whether or not somebody walked in this building with weapons, that the police department, if you ask them privately, would tell you, thank you, so they don't have to worry about whether or not somebody has a weapon in a duffel bag. So when some people say that the rights of the public have been abridged because of things like security, I say quite the opposite. People that now enter this building can come into this building feeling like they're not threatened whatsoever. If that's infringing somebody's rights, then please, please tell me how that is.
What vote, two-nine?
Through the council, to the, to the chair, to the council. I just wanna give an example to try to contextualize what, what the roles and the opinion from the solicitor is providing here. There has been moments where residents have submitted petitions requesting a report from the city manager. That's where we're trying to define that, residents cannot do that. Can residents petition to put a handicap sign? Can residents petition to pave a road or whatever it may be? Absolutely, residents petition that all the time. But for a resident to petition in the council structure, asking for a report from the city manager, et cetera, that's where the roles change. That is the role of the city council, not the roles of, of the resident. And so that, I'm just to give you an example, because there's been petitions in that effort that either have been denied or have been told people, you can't have those petitions put forward, because that's the role of the city council, to ask the city manager to come back with reports on X, Y, Z related to the operations. So that's just an example of the delineation of roles between a resident and a city council. Just to provide an example.
Counsel King.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for clarification purposes for the public, I said that aspects of the steps that we've taken here in the city hall have gone a bit too far. I supported the metal detectors that you walked through, but we also have a system where people are entering their names into some database, and in these times, they have concerns, or their name into a computer they think might be in the database, regardless of what we may say. Then there's a signature that's required with respect to them being in the city hall that is also off-putting. So this by no means is about making, not making sure that folks here feel safe, or that they, that there's no weapons here. I certainly support that. I do have specific, significant concerns that if someone declines to sign, let's go through the chair to administration, what are they signing when they come in?
Mr. Manager?
Through the chair, to the council, it's just an acknowledgement of the conduct policy in the building.
Thank you. And so, we have folks signing under duress a conduct policy that they've received or they agree with, or whatever the case might be, and if someone declines to do that, I'm not quite sure what happens. The concern is regarding liability of accessing the people's hall, which is what city hall is, you know, and trying to go pay a parking ticket and having to sign some, some document. And again, folks have concerns in these times with what's going on with immigration and the like, about, you know, where names go. That being said, Mr. Chairman, this particular item that talks about getting a report back on detailing if the city charter requires public participation to be open to non-Worcester residents, again, just a report. But it's a report that could lead us to a place where we're asking for some sort of identification, ID, papers, passport, I don't know. But it all leads in the same direction. And again, we've been discussing this on the floor for probably three years, different aspects of this. So certainly, thank you for the metal detectors, no thank you to a requirement to add your name to a database through technology or signing a, some sort of document pertaining to how you're gonna behave in city hall when you come to pay a bill. That's off-putting, that reduces civic engagement, that's got nothing to do with weapons, unless we're running some query checks on these names. I don't know what the heck we're doing with it. You know, A, A, it was brought up that this stuff's, A, it was brought up by my colleague that this stuff's gonna make sure we don't have, well, you know what? We're putting names in some sort of database, and we're writing out that, you know, folks are signing some form to get in city hall, what happens if they don't? I think will be subject to litigation. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Pasul.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just procedurally, I'm trying to understand, so thirteen, B, C, and D, these reports were asked for, we now have the reports, they're gonna go to MLO to be discussed at length in MLO.
Correct.
Through the chair, to the council. These are informational reports, based on the conversation that took place in M.O. So they asked us for a comparison of other cities, and then it was also asked for the solicitor to bring back a report. So that's how the report came back. So my question to the body tonight is, what is the direction that you're gonna give the city clerk and the city solicitor moving forward after tonight?
I see.
Rule two states that counselors have the ability to bring resolutions, they have the ability to provide orders and ask for reports from the city administration. Are you amending rule two tonight to allow residents to do the same?
I see. And then, so basically, if a resident wants to ask for a report from the city manager, they can go to any, any of us, and we can then ask for the report on their behalf? And that's how it's always been done?
Through the chair, to the council. Correct. So basically, in the past, resolutions are brought forward by residents. There has been disagreements on this body to file those resolutions, so I've been questioned why I put the resolution on, it started back in October. We had a citizen's petition that was put on, that the members of this body, eleven and zero, filed. I had directions after that to be a strict interpretational rule eleven by this body, and then there was another petition that was denied, and then it was asked to be brought back again in January, that's what happened.
No, thank you so much, and I mean, really, I know we say this every time these, these rule changes come up, but really, I think it would just be great to look at the charter as a whole. It doesn't even mention petitions in the charter. It, it just seems like every few weeks or every month, something really contentious comes up, and just if, I just don't understand what we're doing. If we could just look at the charter as a whole and have a commission, fix it, update it, that's fine, but is... it, that's fine, but is, you could change this rule next term, or it could change tonight, and then it could change back. It just seem, it's, I just, it's a lot. Thank you.
Okay. So, we have a, oh, shoot. Counsel Russell?
Mr. Chairman, you know, words matter. They really do. Words on social media, words on this council floor, words matter. They really do. And I think that that's what we all have to keep in mind. And just like, you know, I mean, Counsel Bergman made the comments about social media and stuff, and it's true, when you, when you put out there on social media or on this council floor, you say there's something going on, when it's really not, it's, 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 you know, you're basically starting, starting a discussion in a different direction. I received an email today at 9:44 a.m. from a resident up on College Hill, resident that I have interacted with on other occasions. Hello, Judge, I'm writing to express my hope that you will vote against limiting the public's voice in petitioning the city council. I believe items 13B and 13C will limit residents' voices in government and will, and would appreciate you voting against the agenda items. Thanks, and have a great day. I responded by doing a screenshot of the items that were on the agenda tonight, and I said, "Attached is a screenshot of the actual items the clerk is sending along." No vote is being requested to stop resident participation, only reports about what other communities are doing. I personally have issues with petitions the city council members and residents put forward that are not in the purview of the city council. There are currently rules in place that prohibit this, but they're not always enforced, and then I, I signed it. So, and that, I, response that I sent back was at 11:30 or thereabouts. Mr. Chairman, I'm not ready to change any rules tonight. I don't think there's a need to take a vote, because we didn't, there's no item on the floor that's before us properly that causes, calls for any changes. So, I'm ready to support the administration. You know that comment you made, Mr. Manager, through you, Mr. Chairman, about the, a report? I got just that email, and I don't think I've, I can't remember ever getting an email like that, and I thought it was kind of unusual. It was from a person that lives on Mass. Soyer Road, a person who has the same name of someone that was on social media trying to encourage people to come to blithew with the disrupted playground. I still responded to that, that residence question. If it was the person or not, I have no idea, but it had the same name. And he asked, because he had put a petition in, asking for a report about whether the hallway of the, the city council, of city hall, excuse me, city hall's hallways could be used for public protest, just for, you know, general protest. So, I said, and he said that he was told by the clerk, I don't know if it was accurate or not, but that's what he said in his email, that he was told that he couldn't ask for a report, and he had to go to a council. So, he came to me, because I'm his district council, I think he CC'd the mayor's staff at mayor at City of Worcester. I responded, because I knew the answer to that. I dug up the old report that came from David Moore from years ago, and I sent it to him. I said, "Just the information you're looking for." So, a lot of times, many of us as council members could get the information to people and cut to the chase and, and answer their questions anyway. So, that's what the process is about, and I, for one, am not ready to change that process tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I have a second time?
Yep. Counsel, HIGI.
You know, I, it's, it's a little frustrating to hear my colleagues mention that words matter when my constituents in District 5, people who came here to petition city council are called rioters, where members of the city council have used words to harm myself and other council members. They have used word to accuse us of things that aren't factually true, like causing a riot or inciting a riot. That is dangerous, and that is when words are used to target and being weaponized. That said, I am very crystal clear and have been very transparent as a matter of my own operating as a city councilor, that I will use any platform I have to communicate with my constituents on matters that I think are important. And it is very frustrating right now to delve into a discussion that we're spending a lot of time trying to fix a problem that doesn't exist. The majority of the petitions that have created controversy are in the petitions that are requesting the city manager to provide a report. If that's the case, then yes, we should, we should filter the residents to come through us. Under one of the side notes, the, the city solicitor mentioned in her report, is that even saying that requesting city council to request city manager for a report is not allowed. I, why? If, if the, if the residents are asking in a polite way, through the city council, to make a request of the city manager, I don't understand why that is any different than a petitioner coming to me and saying, "Etel, could you please ask the city manager for a report?" Furthermore, the city clerk provided examples specific to speaking to communities that do not allow residents to file petitions. There was no, there was, the, the path that I see forward based on all this information is that we're trying to solve a problem that is, doesn't exist. If we are afraid of topics, of taking topics of conversation that create anxiety and create political inconvenience for members, then let's be honest and say that, but these reports do not solve a problem. They're trying to solicit information on a problem that doesn't exist. I would rather try to figure out how we use our time as city council members to facilitate, to support, to enhance, to make it easier for residents to ask their city officials to hear their concerns. That is why I am asking again on the floor, my motion is to affirm that the city council tonight votes to affirm the practice that we are currently practicing and have been done for so many years, that residents continue to petition their elected officials in the same way that they have done. The city clerk, the city solicitor, the city manager's office can figure out the kinks if there are exceptions to that. I am not in favor, because I see a path that, like Counsel King says, goes towards a non, a non-resident-friendly, non-civic participation-friendly way.
Counsel Ojeda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be quick. I just want to make sure by the end of the night that I have a, a really good understanding of if a resident puts in a petition that is supposedly not allowed, but it should go to, potentially can go to one of us, one of the councilors, are we notified, are they notified? How is that process? I'm not, not having been mentioned.
Yeah, through the chair, to the council. So, basically, I'll bring you up an example of this past meeting. There was a resident who was running for office that put on a petition, and there was a city council that put on a petition. So, in this case, it was the same exact language. So, the resident was trying to solicit the clerk's office to see what the order was brought by the councilor. There was a story on Mass. Live, you should follow it. It was a couple weeks ago. So, in this example, we need guidance from the city council. Who has precedent? Does the resident have precedent, or does the city council have precedent? Who gets the item sponsored for the agenda for tonight?
So, is it, is it based on who files it first, or is it someone, is it, is it that resident's just not allowed to?
Well, through the chair, to the councils, we asked the solicitor, and in this case, it was an ordinance change, so the city council was going to sponsor the report tonight, and then we asked the resident that they can speak on tonight, because the council already brought the order forward. But these are examples that are coming up on a weekly basis, and other examples are on Rule 2. It says that members of the city council can sponsor orders, resolutions, and reports to the city manager. Petitions are not specific what the resident can bring forward, so if we're going to have a discussion on tonight of what is appropriate for the petitioners, which technically, discussion should happen in committee, that's why the reports came forward, based on the city council rules, basically, that has to be clarified. So, those are the issues we're dealing with. Rule 11 leaves it all on the clerk and the solicitor. It is my recommendation of the council, if they want to vote on tonight to have the same rights on petitions, then they should strike Rule 11, it says that we should allow all petitions, and then this body can decide if they're appropriate or not.
Okay. Is that clear for everyone? Not clear? Yes, I agree.
I think what you're asking is, if a petition comes in, we don't allow it, do, do you tell them to go see a city councilor?
Correct. Exactly, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Exactly what the city manager had mentioned, if there's something that's going to the city manager, but it's something that is not allowable, are we notified, or are any other councilor notified, so we can meet with that resident and try to put that, that petition forward?
So, if it's not allowed, we usually respond via email. We give them a contact the city council, and then they can select the city council to contact.
Okay.
In most cases, this is not a, a large number of petitions being rejected. Tonight, you had, I don't know how many petitions you have for traffic planning and so on. The concern is, we are not clear right now as an office, and that's what we're hoping to get direction from this council or the committee, is what is the role of a city councilor, and what is the role of a resident when it comes to petitioning certain items for the agenda? And I think, based on what I'm hearing tonight, I hope that I have some clarity after this meeting.
Okay. And based on, I'm sorry, 13C, B, C, and D, that's not exactly what we're talking about that. It's a little different, correct?
Through the chair, to the council. That is, basically, the solicitor brought an opinion. It was going to committee for further discussion. We already had a discussion in committee previously. There is a comparison in other cities, how they deal with this sort of issues. So, that's what the clarity is from, from my perspective, so hopefully tonight I have some more clarity.
Okay.
Okay. I think I'm going to sit still confused.
Okay, so we have a motion to affirm the practice of the current petition process. Did I get that right? Before you do this, Counsel Russell?
Yeah, I, on that motion, I'd just like the city solicitor, if she would please, that, that item that the councilor proposed, did you get the verbiage of it? Because I didn't quite get it exactly, but I think I got the gist of it.
Through the chair.
Maybe the court.
I think I understood was a motion to reaffirm the current practice, but honestly, that's not a consistent practice, so I don't think that's a very good motion to make. That's why we're here today, because the question keeps getting asked, and the clerk is asking you for guidance, and I'm not interpreting, I'm not, you know, making this new interpretation. Every council body changes, Rule 11, Rule 33, Rule 55. It's constantly getting changed a little bit based on the council body. So, to reaffirm the current practice is not, I mean, the current practice is, changes every council body, and it's not very consistent, so...
Okay. Mr. Chairman, thank you through you to the solicitor. And so, that's my, my, my feelings of not being able to support it, and I just want to make sure that the, my constituents that count on me to speak up for them know that that is the reason why, because where the practice is not what it's envisioned is what the solicitor judged. So, I'll be voting against that item.
Okay. Okay. So, the motion for us is reaffirm, is the vote is to take place to reaffirm the current practice of the city clerk's office, no, the city council. Roll call.
Counsel Bergman?
No.
Counsel Calorio?
No.
Counsel HIGI?
Yes.
Counsel King?
Yes.
Counsel Merle Carlson?
No.
Counsel Nyean?
Counsel Ojeda?
Yes.
Counsel Basilo?
Yes.
Counsel Russell?
No.
Counsel Tumi?
No.
And Mayor Petty?
No. Okay, these items are going to go to MO for discussion?
Roll call on that, please.
All three of them together, or?
Does that include 28?
No, we'll get to that in a minute. So, 28, I'm sorry, 13B, roll call. The motion is to send to the MO committee.
Counsel Bergman?
Yes.
Counsel Calorio?
Yes.
Counsel HIGI?
No.
Counsel King?
No.
Counsel Merle Carlson?
Yes.
Counsel Nyean?
Counsel Ojeda?
No.
Counsel Basilo?
No.
Counsel Russell?
I didn't get the item, Mr. Chairman. I was distracted by the-
I'm sorry. We're on 13B, C, and D. We're on 13B.
And these are to send them to committee?
Yeah.
Yes.
Counsel Tumi?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes.
Okay, communication, city current history information, communication of the rules of residents and city councils replacing items on the city council agendas. Motion is to send it to committee.
Roll call, please.
Roll call.
Counsel Bergman?
Yes.
Counsel Calorio?
Yes.
Counsel HIGI?
No.
Counsel King?
No.
Counsel Merle Carlson?
Yes.
Counsel Nyean?
Counsel Ojeda?
No.
Counsel Basilo?
No.